Meeting to order, please start with the roll.
This meeting is being recorded.
Hey, Council President Corman.
Mayor.
Councilmember Prince. Councilmember McGurven.
Here.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
Here.
Councilmember Benedetti.
Here.
Councilmember Van.
Here.
Councilmember Perez.
Here.
Roll call Mr. Mayor, one absent.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Council President Corman.
I move that Councilmember Prince be excused. Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Council President Corman, seconded by Councilmember McGurven, that Councilmember Prince be excused. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Okay, motion carries. So tonight, we are going to start off with a proclamation for Juneteenth.
Hey, proclamation. Whereas we acknowledge the notice of freedom given to the slaves of the state of Texas on June 19th, 1865, and whereas we give honor and respect on this day to the suffering of our ancestors, and we acknowledge the evils of slavery and its aftermath. Whereas, on this celebration, we think about the moment in 1888 when 300 black men from Virginia, North Carolina, and Kentucky were determined to escape the terrorism of the post-Civil War South as they boarded trains for the Washington Territory and settled in King County mining camps. And whereas, the story and outspokenness of James Shepperson, an educated black man who settled in Roslyn, Washington in 1888, inspired many other blacks to flee the South at great risk and pursue new opportunities in Washington State as miners. And whereas, we acknowledge African-American freedom, contributions, and achievements within this community, past and present. And whereas, during the Juneteenth event, we appreciate the African-American experience and celebrate the inclusion of all races, ethnicities, and nationalities. And whereas, we commit to working together toward equity for all and expanding economic, educational, and career opportunities for all those in our community. Now therefore, I, Armando Pavoni, Mayor of the City of Renton, do hereby proclaim June 19th, 2021, to be Juneteenth 2021 in the City of Renton. And I encourage all citizens to join me in this celebration and witness whereof. I have herein to set my hand to cause the seal of the City of Renton to be affixed this 14th day of June 2021. Signed, Armando Pavoni, Mayor of the City of Renton.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Council President Corman.
I move that councils concur in the proclamation. Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Council President Corman, seconded by Councilmember McGurven, that the council concur in the proclamation. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Okay, motion carries. And tonight, to accept the proclamation, we have a couple people joining us tonight, Dr. Linda Smith and Monique Taylor Swan. Dr. Smith. Police staff will be unmuting you shortly.
Dr. Smith, you've been promoted to a panelist. You should be able to unmute yourself and share your video.
There you are. Thank you. Thank you, thank you. So, good evening, Honorable Mayor and Chairperson of the City Council and City Council members. We're excited for the proclamation today as we approach this year's Juneteenth celebration, which is the fourth in the City of Renton. We're excited because it is more than an event. We started this about four years ago with the City of Renton and the Renton Police Department, and it has really advanced into a celebration, acknowledgement of the struggles and advancement of justice for Black Americans. Our theme this year is Rising From The Ashes. Our theme speaks to the fact that this is not just an event, but an opportunity for us to put in action equity and justice in all realms of our lives. The history of Blacks in America has definitely been one of many atrocities, but we're also resilient people and will continue to rise and rise. So we're excited tonight for the progress that has been made, but also inspired by what can and is to be as we continue to raise our voice and work to bring about equity and justice. And as we've done in the past, we like to highlight those people in our community who are really doing great work. And tonight, we are honored to have our amazing recipients, Monique Taylor Swan and Francesca Bacca, who are doing amazing work here in the City of Renton in advancing justice. So thank you for allowing me these few moments tonight, and I now turn it over to Monique.
Thank you, Dr. Linda Smith. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and the councils. I am honored today to accept this award on the behalf of Juneteenth to acknowledge and educate our community and on the struggles of our ancestors and our mothers and fathers' grandparents, of how we became free. This is a moment, once again, in Renton's history's time, that we are acknowledging the movement of our history. And ashes, rise above our ashes, is much more powerful than ever this year. Thank you so much, and I accept this award.
Thank you. I don't know, I'm not sure if Francesca was able to join us tonight. I don't see her in the audience at this point. See her.
No, I do not see her, Mr. Mayor.
I don't see her either. Okay. Well, thank you. Thank you very much for joining us tonight, Dr. Smith.
Thank you.
And I'm sure we'll see you very soon. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great evening. Okay, next up, we have a public hearing extending and amending the interim zoning controls, and we, Paul Hints, will be providing us with that information. There he is.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of City Council. For the record, I am Paul Hints, and for those participating by telephone, my phone number is 425-430-7436, and I can reach out email at P-H-I-N-T-Z@rentonwa.gov. As Mr. Mayor announced, this is a proposed extension of ordinance 5996 and allowing a permanent supportive housing through an emergency ordinance. By way of background, emergency ordinance 5996 did several things. First and foremost, it clarified municipal code land use definitions. It also clarified and corrected text related to our codes, land use interpretation process, distinctions between principal and accessory uses, and staff titles. It added three land uses with definitions, approval criteria, standards, and zoning. Those include homeless services uses, which would be overnight or day shelters, COVID-19 de-intensification shelter, and extended stay hotels. And then finally, it allowed a single COVID-19 de-intensification shelter to operate until January 1st of 2022, but with a required reduction by 125 persons by June 1st of this year. Obviously, the June 1st deadline has come and gone, but the city decided to not enforce that provision as a cooperative of King County and DESC to present tonight's ordinance that will help them facilitate housing of homeless persons. So tonight's ordinance, again, will extend provisions of ordinance 5996, except as noted within the slide here. It will allow a single COVID-19 de-intensification shelter to operate no later than September 30th of 2022, which is a date the operator in King County informed the city will be sufficient time to relocate all residents to more permanent accommodations. For new overnight shelters, it increases the occupancy from 100 to 115 if at least 15% of those persons served are those currently experiencing homelessness in Renton. It allows City Council to approve homeless services uses and/or new permanent supportive housing by way of a negotiated development agreement as an alternative to the conditional use process or master plan process. And then finally, in the CO zone, it allows permanent supportive housing to be converted from existing extended stay hotels and weighs the minimum residential density, structured parking, and commercial mixed-use requirements as normally applied to residential uses in the CO zone. The changes in this ordinance, that is 5996, are based on discussions with King County and DESC and meant to accommodate the immediate homeless services needs in the city. City staff will continue to work on non-interim zoning to address long-term homeless services needs and to ensure compliance with the new state law that restricts cities' discretion in how they zone to accommodate homeless services. That new law requires additional council action, no relation to September 30th this year. And the staff's recommendations are to accept public testimony and vote on tonight's ordinance. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any correspondence?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I received an email from a Renton resident, Jesse Friedman, expressing support for tonight's ordinance.
Okay. Is there anyone that would like to testify?
Mr. Mayor, I have not received anyone that signed up in advance to speak tonight. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address council regarding tonight's public hearing? And I do see a hand raised. Let's see. Winter Cashman. Winter, go ahead.
Hello, thank you, Mr. Mayor and honorable counsel. I just wanted to give you a huge thanks for working with DESC on this policy and making sure that we allowed them to stay here until the county can find them permanent housing elsewhere. So I just really appreciate the changes here tonight. Thank you so much.
The next person we have is Dr. Smith. Dr. Smith, go ahead.
Okay, Honorable Mayor and City Council member, Shepperson. Yeah, thank you so much for the provisions that you've made and the, you know, additional resources that are being put in place. It feels like really good justice moving forward in the right way. So again, thank you for your compassionate leadership and just really look forward to helping to continue to bring about solutions for our community. So thank you.
Okay.
I see no other hands raised, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. What's the wish of the council at this time?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Council President Corman.
I move the public hearing be closed. Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Council President Corman, seconded by Councilmember McGurven, that the public hearing be closed. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Next up, we have administrative report.
Right, good evening, everyone. Thank you. The Surface Water Utility received pollution preventive prevention assistance funding up to $175,000 from the Department of Ecology's Hazardous Waste and Toxic Reduction Program. The funding will be used in partnership with Ecology to cover technical assistance for automotive, light industrial, dry cleaning, distribution centers, food services, grocery stores, mini-marts, and retail. A subcontract will focus on reducing or removing pollutants from stormwater and hazardous waste by providing technical assistance, system and program development, and producing educational videos in multiple languages. Park's Planning and Natural Resources Forestry Program is pleased to announce that the 10-year Urban Forestry Management Plan is being redrafted for 2021 to 2031. Planet Geo is the external consultant who will help in these efforts over the next nine months. Their participation was announced at the April 12th, 2021 COW. The project slogan is rooted in Renton, and public feedback will be sought throughout the planning process. RentonForestryPlan.com is a dedicated website that has been set up to invite public participation and provide a specific point of contact for the project. Please contact the Urban Forester, Ian Gray, with any questions at igrey, that's G-R-A-Y, at RentonLaw.gov, 4425-430-6601. Information about preventative street maintenance, traffic impact projects, and road closures happening this week can be found at RentonLaw.gov/trap. All projects are weather permitting, unless otherwise noted, streets will always remain open.
Okay, thank you. Next, we'll open the remote audience comment period. It remains the strong intent of the city to have public comment regularly included on our agendas. Each speaker will be given five minutes to speak. You'll be called upon by a city staff member. The staff member will call the speaker's name and unmute the appropriate microphone, which will send an automatic prompt to the speaker of you've been unmuted. This is the speaker's cue that it's their turn to speak. Please begin your comments by stating your name, city of residence, and the topic you're addressing. Speakers should be able to see a timer on the screen. Please finish up your comments when you see the time is close to expiring. Do we have anybody signed up?
Mr. Mayor, I have no one signed up in advance to speak. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address council? If so, please use your computer to raise your hand. And I see no hands raised, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. We will move on to consent agenda. We have 11 items for council consideration.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Council President Corman.
At this time, I'd like to ask if any council member would like any of the items removed for individual consideration. Seeing none, I move approval of the consent agenda as published. Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Council President Corman, seconded by Councilmember McGurven, that the consent agenda be approved as published. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Unfinished business. Council President Corman.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember McGurven.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the Finance Committee has four committee reports.
Okay, the first Finance Committee committee report is approval of claims and payroll vouchers. The Finance Committee approves the following payments. Council payable total payment $7,622,756.74 for a number of vouchers, including payroll vouchers and five wire transfers. The payroll was a total payment of $1,477,442.69 for payroll vouchers, including 568 direct deposits and two checks. This is the May 1st through May 15th pay period. And then municipal court vouchers totaling $835.42.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember O'Halloran.
I move that council concur with the Finance Committee committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember O'Halloran, seconded by Councilmember McGurven, that the council concur with the Finance Committee committee report. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Okay, the next report is regarding an agreement with King County for local hazardous waste management programs. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to execute the Community Services Agreement 6218 EHS with Public Health Seattle and King County to accept $112,349.68 of non-matching grant funds in 2021, 2022 for local hazardous waste management program projects.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember O'Halloran.
I move that council concur with the Finance Committee's committee report.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember O'Halloran, seconded by Councilmember McGurven, that the council concur with the Finance Committee committee report. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Okay, motion carries.
Okay, the next Finance Committee report is regarding a grant from the FFA, or excuse me, the FAA, or the, for the airport. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the local agency agreement with the Federal Aviation Administration, FAA, for the obligation of CRRSAA grant funding through the Airport Coronavirus Response Grant Program and all subsequent agreements necessary to ensure full use and expenditure of this grant.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
I move that council concur with the Finance Committee committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember O'Halloran, seconded by Councilmember McGurven, that the council concur with the Finance Committee committee report. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Okay, the final Finance Committee committee report is regarding another grant for the airport. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the acceptance of a Washington Airport Management Association internship grant in the amount of $1,000. The grant will be used to cover a portion of the airport intern salary.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
I move that the council concur with the Finance Committee committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember O'Halloran, seconded by Councilmember McGurven, that the council concur with the Finance Committee committee report. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Councilmember Benedetti.
I have no unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Van.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Perez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Planning and Development Committee has a committee report to present.
Okay, the Planning and Development Committee committee report is regarding 2021 Title IV Docket 16 Group A. The Planning Development Committee concurs with the staff and planning commission recommendation to adopt 2021 Title IV Docket 16 Group A. The Planning Development Committee further recommends that ordinances for the items listed below be prepared and presented for first reading when they are complete. This includes Docket Item 187, Appeal Notice, Docket 188, Impact Fee Credit, Docket 189, Setbacks in Commercial Zones, Docket 190, Applicability of Design Regulations, and finally, Docket 192, Fences.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Perez.
I move that the council concur with the Planning and Development Committee committee report.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Perez, seconded by Councilmember O'Halloran, that the council concur with the Planning and Development Committee committee report. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Next up, legislation. We have one ordinance for first reading.
Okay, the.
And advanced to second and final.
Great, thanks. So for first reading, it's regarding the public hearing we had earlier tonight. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, extending the interim zoning controls established in ordinance number 5996 with amendments to temporarily allow continued operations of a de-intensification shelter in the commercial arterial CA zoning district and revise homeless services use permitting requirements to better accommodate new emergency and permanent supportive housing.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Council President Corman.
Just a quick point of order, is the intent that this go to second, final tonight?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, with that, I move this ordinance be placed on second, final reading tonight. Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Council President Corman, seconded by Councilmember McGurven, that the ordinance be placed on second and final reading tonight. Any conversation? Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Okay, motion carries.
Okay, I'll read it again. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, extending the interim zoning controls established in ordinance number 5996 with amendments to temporarily allow continued operations of a de-intensification shelter in the commercial arterial zone, CA zoning district, and revise homeless services use permitting requirements to better accommodate new emergency and permanent supportive housing.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Council President Corman.
I move approval of the ordinance as read. Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Council President Corman, seconded by Councilmember McGurven, that the ordinance be adopted as read. Requires roll call.
Council President Corman.
Aye.
Councilmember McGurven.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
Aye.
Councilmember Benedetti.
Aye.
Councilmember Van.
Aye.
Councilmember Perez.
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all ayes.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Next up, we have new business. Council President Corman. Yes, Mr. Mayor, two meetings to announce, both a week from today, Monday, June 21st. The first is at 6:00 PM, committee the whole meeting, and we have one item on that agenda. It's Washington State DOT/ Sound Transit I-405 BRT corridor update. And I just wanted to say a couple words about that. I actually may end up with a conflict for that meeting, so I may not be able to be present, and I would just ask Mr. McGurven to step in as the pro tem. But at the same time, it's a presentation that I've seen many times. I've been representing the city and the council on both the 405 corridor and the BRT program. And I just wanted to give, get you thinking about the fact that, so we've, it's been a very long and coming and well-choreographed process putting together the new, the expansion of I-405 and the new lanes, new off-ramps, along, and it's timed so that it's available just in time in 2024 to start our BRT, which will provide connective service to Link Light Rail. And since the Link Light Rail stations in Bellevue and Tuckwilla don't have enough parking, it's very important for our residents to be able to use Link to be able to have BRT working. And it's an early win. The reason the presentations are coming together is the agencies are working really well together. They're working really well with the cities up and down the corridor to get the 405, and the BRT, you know, really nicely designed so they work together. So the reason I'm sharing this is both agencies are having funding issues because of the pandemic. And both agencies are looking for places that they can cut their budget and trim their budget. And I would just like to say to the council that we just need to reinforce this is not a place to do that. This is, it's a very small part of Sound Transit III's budget to provide this. It's an early win for them. Renton has waited a very long time for this level of service from Sound Transit. And then the I-405, we've waited a long time too. We've been part of the I-405 plan for 20 years. And anyways, they're not, they're not coming asking us to agree to cut our budget, but I want to say that both agencies are really struggling. And so I would just say, if I'm not able to be here, I'd ask the council to help reinforce how important these are for our residents. So, and then I will also go on and announce the regular council meeting at 7:00 PM, and both the committee of the whole and the council meeting are via video conference. And that's all, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. And that was very well said, Council President Corman. It's definitely an important fight that we are, we are in, or, I don't know if "fight" is the right word, but cooperation to make sure that Renton is taken care of in this next, next go around. So, okay, next up is Councilmember McGurven.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First off, I've just been replying to Council President Corman. I'd be more than happy to chair that meeting should he be absent. In fact, I would commend him and thank him for his stellar attendance record, and this is, it would be only the second time, and the other time was on housing. So thankfully, this one's on transportation, so it couldn't get much easier. So thank you for that. My meeting to announce will be for the Transportation Committee on Monday, June 21st at 5:15 PM via video conference. We have four items on the agenda. Renton Airport Advisory Committee bylaws, Amendment Number 521 to LAG 12-4 with Bozair LLC for the 2021 expansion area at the Renton Municipal Airport. That's a long one. Proposed speed limit revisions for three locations, and finally, emerging issues in transportation. And that's all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember O'Halloran.
I have no new business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Councilmember Benedetti.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I would like to announce that at 3:00 PM on June 4th, I'm sorry, on January 1st, 2021, we're meeting of the Utilities Committee, our video conference, five items on the, force to check pipeline company LLC, property acquisition for the King County Property Services, Platts Parcels, Kail Reservoir mural project, the update to the 2019 water system plan, and emerging issues facilities. Thank you.
Thank you. Jason, were you able to hear that? I think we were having a little bit of audio issue. I'll make sure that residents at home were able to hear that.
I was able to hear it, but would you like me to repeat her agenda?